Okay, everyone, turn on your mics. We're gonna get started promptly today at 6:00 P. M. We'll start with the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay, and I believe we have one, well, roll call. Gail could not make it today due to the short notice and prior engagements. The rest of us are present. We will take citizen input. I believe we have, is this one? Just one of you? Okay. If you'd like to provide your input real quick.
Sure. That microphone may not be turned on, Bob.
I'll turn it on. Make sure it's orange. Yeah.
All right. Well, good evening. My name is Bob Travers. I'm the Chair of the Shealem Glen Clubhouse Advisory Committee. And so this is, this is a request we're asking of the Board. The, I'll read this. "The Gulf Clubhouse Advisory Committee is actively working on their commitment to provide input to help the Board in making the decisions on the building of a new clubhouse. Our plan is to have an initial report on community interest to the Board as early as 2025. We realize the Board and current staff are going to be spending much time in search and selection process for a superintendent. There are areas our committee will need input and approval from the staff and continue our task. Before Dawn's departure, the committee was directed to work with Dawn and Casey for interaction with staff. Casey is already extremely committed with his responsibilities, and we suggest that Kellen Sackin to be the staff contact for our committee."
That's it?
And we'll, we'll go to staff with that request.
Thank you.
We'll see, see what they can work out.
Thank you.
I have books.
Yeah. I'm sure everyone silenced their phones. Okay. Well, without further ado, we'll move right into our primary discussion item today, which is the superintendent's search. We are joined by SDAO Bob Keifer. And I'm just gonna turn it over to you in the interest of time. And hopefully, we can get all of everyone's questions answered on this and then also have a brief discussion as well for the project planner. We have a job description and I'm sure we'll have some questions on how you guys maybe can help us with that as well. So I'll hand it over to you.
Okay. So first of all, thank you for having me out. You probably all know that I, my whole career was in Parks and Recreation Management for about forty years and finished my last sixteen at Willamalein. So very familiar with special park and recreation districts. And I do think they're special. I think they're great. And our communities that have them seem to thrive in their parks and recreation activities. And so, and Shealem has been no different. You should be very proud of where you're at and what you've accomplished over all these years. Dawn was a colleague of mine and I respected very much all the work that has been done here in Shealem. And so, thank you for allowing him to be a leader in the field here. So it's been, it's been good for the state. So you met with Mark Knutson, I think it was September nineteenth. And, and I'm sorry I couldn't be here, but it was on a, I think I was on the Rogue River floating the river or something. I don't know.
Oh, man, you really missed out.
It was really tough that day. But, but Mark provided you a good outline and I didn't bring copies of that again. I know that you got this information, sort of the process that we use. And now with the Dawn's resignation, we were moving things all along real fast. When Jim called, I don't know, was it Thursday last week?
Thanks for moving forward. Appreciate it.
Yeah. It caught me a little bit off guard and then I thought, oh, later in the month, I'll get to, later in October, I'll get with this Board and we'll start lining out the process because we have, you know, some time to do that. I am gonna tell you, this fall hiring of any staff, especially professional staff, is really hard only because of all the holidays that come up and all these other time commitments that people have. I put a pretty aggressive schedule together for you. It will require some commitments to make some decisions relatively quick if we want to try to have somebody on, in my estimation, around February first. So I just keep that in mind as I'm talking through this, is that I've been through this a couple of times with park and recreation districts. The latest one was down in River Road. Same type of timeframe of trying to get somebody during that, that holiday period. You get them to apply and now you have a lag because it's Thanksgiving. And then you got a lag because between Christmas and New Year's. And then getting somebody there and then everybody's scheduled. And then you select somebody and professional folks, if they're coming from someplace that's not nearby, it's usually a three to four week lag before you can actually get them on, onsite and settled in. So that's why that February first date is, is where it's at. I've done this a number of times and I've found that you have to be prepared for that. In addition, sometimes we, we try to get down to three to five candidates for the interviews. And boy, sometimes we're really capable of getting ten, twelve people that are qualified and the Board or the selection committee can't really narrow it down just with the information that we have. And then you have another couple of weeks because you're gonna do virtual interviews for that and narrow that group down. So know that all those pieces can play a part in how soon can we have a, a new superintendent here at, at the district.
Well, I think I can speak for the Board and correct me if I'm wrong, is that it takes a little longer to get that qualified applicant than, than so, yeah, we just want to do the best we can to get that qualified applicant.
Yeah.
So, yeah, the sooner the better, but again, we don't wanna rush it either.
Yeah. And that's my understanding. I would not guide you any other way, Jim.
Okay, I know.
It would be, you know, if we don't, if we don't get a bunch of good candidates, we're gonna keep pushing. And if that delays it by a month, it delays it by a month. I'd, you'd much rather have a really great candidate in here than just settle just because we, we got in a time crunch. That, that should not be a factor. At the same time, I know at this point, you're not, you don't have anybody in those shoes. And where's that leadership gonna come from? It's gonna be spread among your staff and that's not always a situation that you wanna continue for a long time. So just something to keep in mind. Tonight, what I wanna do is I wanna cover some, some things that, first, I wanna cover this timeline and then I wanna cover some things that I wanna make sure you're thinking about and who's gonna be responsible for providing that information. So because I'm a stickler, I told Jim that I really wanna have an idea of what's most important from the Board. What's going on in this district that, you know, let's, let's match the need of the district with the attributes of the people that we're trying to recruit here. And how we set up our announcement, where we recruit, all those things play into that. And so as we look at, at this timeline, I wanna try to at least have some conversations with some people to sort of have an idea, okay, what's the most important things? And if we can have some of that discussion tonight, that's great. By the way, we need to do as much in this preliminary part of this recruitment in open session, including setting the salary, including setting the, the process that we're gonna use in open session. In that, so that when we get to interviews, all of that information can be done in executive session. We can keep names of people that have applied, quiet until it's time for that interview, those type of things. Otherwise, we have to do all of that in open session. So, so we wanna make sure that we make some of those decisions as we go ahead here. So tonight, I wanna sort of have all the, talk a little bit more about the selection process, the compensation and the timeline. Are we gonna appoint a super, superintendent search committee tonight? Or then another point, what's that look like? That's gonna be a discussion among you as a Board. And then I would like the opportunity to at least have a virtual meeting with, I would recommend to you, it's optional at this time. It's not gonna cost you any more money. As far as, you know, we're, we're not gonna exceed the, the amount that the SDAO quoted, but an optional virtual meeting, at least with the direct reports to the superintendent. And to ask them, how do they think they're gonna, what's the most important attributes of that next superintendent? Some of those characteristics and what they think of a process and what process, yes?
Can, can some staff, can like recommend staff amongst them be part of this process or is that only for Board?
Let me go, keep going through this. The final decision, you only have one staff member, okay?
Right.
That's superintendent. And so at the end of the day, they don't have a say on who you select other than they can provide comments, make some recommendations, but at the end of the day, it's all you. And we can go over that process a little bit. If you, as a Board, wanna delegate authority to a committee that is beyond you, such as adding a staff member to the committee that's going to make recommendations of who we're gonna interview, that's up to you. That's your decision at that point. The one thing that I would caution you about, as you open up this committee to more people, confidentiality can sometime leak and it's easy for it to happen. And so you need to sort of make sure that as we go through that, that the committee understands its role and that, you know, people are applying for a job that may have a very good job and they're looking at this as the next step and a word gets out to their employer that they're looking, that sometimes isn't a good thing. And we wanna honor that. So confidentiality is really important throughout this process. So I'd like to be able to set that up and I, I think it's good for us to be able to hear from your staff and just with me, and I can sort of consolidate that information in a, in a way that would help us further define what's the job description look like? What does the job announcement look like? What, did we miss something as a Board? And then I would like to meet with that super, that search committee or to work through any additional changes and get down to the final details of the rest of the recruitment. What's the job announcement look like? What, exactly where we're going to advertise that? All those things get down to it if that's what you want. Otherwise, it's the whole Board making that decision. And so then on October fifteenth, I would hope to finalize all of that information, get it to SDO so that they can do all the announcements out. Get all of that set out for you. If we decide that the Park District is going to do something, then that will be all ready. So that on October sixteenth, we could, at this, on this schedule, we could actually post the position. In my recommendation, we do it nationally, using the NRPA. And by the way, there's a great portion of that in there that we can do a resume search of people that are looking for jobs throughout the nation for this type of job and who's looked for it in the last six months. And I can target emails to them, hey, have you looked at this? And tell them why. And here's where you can look at the job announcement. Been able to recruit some really good people to apply for positions in some of the other searches that I've helped with. Not a headhunter. That's really just about who's out there looking for this. And, and then there are some people that I do know that I might call, but again, I'm not gonna spend a lot of time on recruiting or being a headhunter for you. It's what's out there in the professional field. At this schedule, we would close on November eighteenth. And then SDO, that being me, and Shanta Carter, who's the administrator of the Consulting Services Program, will verify that all those people that applied have fulfilled all the requirements. They've got their application done. They've got a resume. They got a cover letter. And they meet whatever minimum qualifications we're requiring of them. We also take into consideration at that point, if they're knowing about, will know about, you may not know about their veteran preference. That's another piece in this that we have to work through. We would send that information either to the whole Board if you wanna score those applications or to the search committee. At that point, they'd have about six days to go through those applications and rank those applications, score those applications. I, I have a process I like to use that I would share with the committee and, and that way we could score them appropriately. Yes?
How many applications did you have for River Road?
We had a, I think the first round, we had somewhere near twenty.
Yeah, just so they know how many they did.
Yeah. But the world is different now. That was during a little bit, during COVID. And we may end up seeing thirty or forty. Now, how many of them meet the minimum qualifications? Because sometimes when you use Indeed and some of those other, you get a bunch of stuff that, you know, it just goes, they don't even meet the minimum qualifications.
And you would, you would as, you would as our consultants say, okay, they don't meet the, they're not, we're not turning them over to the,
Right.
The Board or the committee?
Right. I wouldn't, I wouldn't send them to you at all. Now, I've had Boards, I've worked with an irrigation district out in Hermiston and they said, oh, no, we wanna see them all. Because they, they just felt like, you know, we're not gonna get a lot. And by the way, that might be somebody that has a lot of great farming experience and relationships and maybe they don't meet the minimum, but we wanna see them. So that was up to them. Again, this is your, your decision at that point. But right now, our plan would be, one of the things, one of the services we're doing is, you don't have to go through these applications. They don't meet whatever minimum qualifications are set. Okay? And then we would come back on November twenty-fifth. I can't remember what day of the week that is and that may not be your normal meeting date.
It's a Monday.
Is it a Monday?
I think it is.
Is that Monday of Thanksgiving week? Yeah.
Yeah, it is.
It was. So that we could, we could say, okay, here are the top scores. And if that's a recommendation from your search committee or all of you doing it, we rank those and we determine who do we want to notify to be semifinalists and to be invited for an interview. At that point, we may decide, as I mentioned when I first started, that we may decide, oh, let's do virtual interviews first before we go to the expense of bringing people in. That just might, you know, we can make that decision at that point. We just have to adjust our schedule at that point.
And we have to say, everybody is virtual or everybody is in person, right?
That's right.
You can't do the top and that.
That's right. That's right. That's right. Now, some attorney may say, yeah, you can, but I can tell you the fairness in me says you do that. Everybody does the same thing. And that's how I've done it with any time I've done virtual.
So if you have people that are further away, you would suggest them virtual?
Only if we're gonna do a pre-screening.
Okay.
You know, if we're gonna have our interviews here and then, no, I wouldn't do that. It's just, it's part of the expense of getting them here.
Okay.
And then I was looking at December twelfth and then I looked at this again today as far as interviews. I'd like to try to do interviews on Fridays or Mondays. The twelfth is a Thursday. The reason I like to do Fridays and Mondays, it's just easier for people to travel that have a job versus taking more days off, being over the weekend, being there. But at this point, we can do it on the twelfth. And if we, we can meet after those interviews are over, after, if we have a, a public meet and greet, whatever we decide to do in that process, then the Board can meet and hear all the comments from staff if we do that, all the comments from the community, your own interviews, all that process. Meet that evening if we do it during the day or meet the next day and hopefully come to a selection on a preferred candidate. And then we would take the time, if we, if we got there and we said, yeah, we want Joe Schmo or Sally's whoever, then we are, we would start the process of notifying that person and start the background checks. And again, you can decide and the committee can decide, how far of a background check do we wanna go? SDO provides the biomed one, which is a very basic criminal background check. But do you wanna do more? Do you wanna dive into further, more than what you see just on references? So that would be a, a decision point as well. And so we would, and then we'd negotiate a contract. Now, I don't know if Dawn had a contract or not, but most executive directors of park and recreation districts that I'm familiar with have a employment agreement with the district that's, could be slightly different than what the Personnel Manual says for the, for all the rest of the staff. And part of that reasoning is that Boards change, politics change, somebody doesn't like something and some, and the executive director, it's time for him to go. And they haven't done anything wrong. It's just what's going on and it's a protection for them. It's also a protection for you to say, if this person isn't doing X, Y, and Z, they're out the door. And there's different ways you can look at that agreement. That's when you should have some good legal counsel to look at that. We can certainly show you and provide you examples, templates of what others are. But for instance, they've been here for three years. They get a month's worth of severance pay if they leave, you know, after they've been here so long. That's just, that's one thing. It's about, okay, are we gonna cover maybe the staff here, the insurance? And part of the negotiations we make, we're gonna cover the whole family at no cost to the superintendent versus the staff in this organization is, we cover the employee and half the family. I don't know. I don't know what your benefits are. But those are things that can be negotiated. Maybe it keeps the salary down, but it's appealing to them because that's tax-free and I, my, my wife doesn't have to get insurance then. So those are the things that you can do with an employment agreement that if you just run by what's in your Personnel Manual, you can't do. You don't have that same flexibility. So we would need to, over those two weeks, determine that. And then there's four weeks there of, you know, working through. And maybe they could start earlier if we get a contract earlier or whatever than February first. But I gave that some slack there. So that, that's timeline for that. What's your thoughts on that? Does it seem reasonable?
I think that this is an impossible schedule. And if you can make that happen, I think that's awesome. But it's, it seems like a very ambitious schedule. So, but I like it.
Well, the, the reason it's ambitious is because I just had the sense that you guys were pretty, wanted to move pretty quickly.
Yeah.
And with that said, I need commitments from you and if, from some of these decisions that have to be made. I have to, I'll just be brutally honest, if you don't mind.
Okay.
The, the job description that I got today is not the job description that I would expect for a superintendent. It talks about running special events. They don't run the special events. Your staff runs the special events. They're ensuring that those things happen. That is just one real quick thing. I just glanced at it now. We need to get us, we need to get a job description prepared that's approved by you as a board. You know, we, we need to know what, what's the salary, starting salary range before we can, and I'm talking about starting salary range. You can have your full salary range. I don't know if you've had a salary survey done of, you know, what other people are paying and what, what you're doing there. So those are types of things that we need to make, you as a board need to make as far as being able to make the schedule. So Matt, we may not be able to meet the schedule if we don't have some of these decision points fairly soon. You know, and again, Jim was talking about to me before the meeting about the possibility of having this search committee and who's involved in that search committee and what's their role. Those decisions need to be made as well to inform me and others about how we're going to proceed in this process. So I took what I had for information and put it here, hoping that we can move pretty quick on making some of these decisions. So that, you know, this is, you, you're right, Matt. It's, there's some speed here. There's a couple of weeks probably slack in there with, when, when we could probably get somebody here, but, or do some additional work. So maybe February fifteenth or March first could be a start date instead.
Historically, I don't know, and Dawn here wasn't even on the board. But historically, I don't know of a contract that took place back in nineteen eighty-four with the board that was there at that time. I don't even know where to find that. So, and as far as the job description is concerned, we've been with the same person for forty years. So we really haven't had, unless Dawn, you can correct me, an updated job description for that position. So I think that we would, and folks jump in when you want, we would be leaning on SDO to help us to formulate those articles to be able to move forward.
So like if you guys have other, like size districts that, that we could see that it's a more recent job description and salary ranges around the area, I think that that would, that would help us out because, yeah, it's been forty years.
I think Dawn has something to ask.
So I was just going to add, so I'm sort of a unique position in that I've, I, I was involved in the search for Dawn in a similar way that I'm going to be involved in this one. Because I was still at the graphic. I hadn't jumped off in mine. My, my, my career of thirty-plus years as a lobbyist and such yet. I was at the graphic and the park district was part of my beat. And so the board back then was the search committee. There was no other search committee. It was just the board at the time. But, you know, I attended all the meetings because I was a reporter. I attended all the executive sessions because I was a reporter. So it's kind of similar to this. You know, I got to go, go do everything except I didn't get to vote. So it's kind of deja vu all over again, as the only bearer would say. But Dawn didn't want a contract and Dawn didn't want a job description. He was very clear about that.
There you go.
That's what I understood. He didn't have a contract.
And, and, and I'm not saying that
And there was some pushback on that over the years.
But he'd been here I can just tell you, Superintendent Lamalane, I'm glad I had a contract. Because it, we were able to negotiate some things that allowed me to save myself some money and, and do some things as that. And I had clear expectations in that contract.
Accountability.
Yeah, accountability. Job description, performance appraisals, all about knowing expectations.
Yes.
And what a person's going to do and what your minimum requirements are for a job and how much experience do you want? And all those things and the, and the type. So, you know, you guys have been very fortunate with having, you know, somebody very steady in this position that loved being here. That doesn't always occur. And so I'm just trying to help you think, okay, what are we going to do another ten years from now? Or five years from now? Or if, you know, there's changes that occur that we, we're not doing, doing things right and from a legal standpoint as well. So.
So, because you, you want us to make decisions and I know that we, we all have limits, different limits on time today. What is the, kind of the first step decision that we need to make? Because we know that we want you to help with salary range based on whatever objective criteria you have access to. We also know that we want you to provide us with job descriptions. That probably will have to go to a, to the committee, I'm assuming, because unless you can hammer out a job description freehand real quick and then, you know, we can't make a decision as a full board tonight.
No.
And I don't think we have the, the convenience of reconveniencing at a meeting with the full board after that description has been provided. So I think, I think I speak for everyone and if not, please jump in. But I think we all trust SDO to provide those two things. So the salary range, what, what you feel is objective based on whatever the measures and the job description. And then the subcommittee can kind of tweak it or go with option A, B, or C. But beyond that, is it really just what the committee looks like? How you're interacting with them, the scheduling of meetings?
So tonight, I think the first thing we need to know is, are you as a board going to delegate authority to a subcommittee? Or a committee that is going to be in charge of working with me and making decisions on behalf of the board to move things ahead? That's, and, and if that's the case, you need to appoint that a committee in an open meeting. If that's not tonight, it needs to occur pretty quickly. And we can revisit the schedule based on when that committee's formed. In the meantime, I can be working on job, job description, look at what salary range is. I would like to know Dawn's compensation package that he had before he retired. So that, that's sort of a base. I mean, people are going to want to look and know what was Dawn getting? What was his compensation at that point, you know? And that'll be something that we'll need to have as information. You know, and then if we had, I could redo the schedule based once I know we're going to have, if you guys are going to move with a committee, then I can revamp things a little bit and, and work things through differently.
Well, I'll start and then I'll just go around. I, I definitely suggest the committee, a subcommittee. If, it would have to be two members of our board anymore and then it's a quorum, right?
Well, it doesn't matter under the new public meeting laws. If they're appointed by you, they're considered a public committee. And they're, they have to stay within the public meeting laws. And so we'll have a quorum of that committee. So if you have two of you and you decide to bring in three different people, a quorum of three, of five would be the quorum. So, so it's, and we're going to have to post when we're going to meet. It's different. We, we just, I, I serve on the district Park and Recreation District Board. Our super, and our executive director went through this thing with the new law with the way public meetings are. If, if your superintendent appointed a couple of people to go do something, that's not a public meeting. But once they represent you and are appointed by you, they are a public body.
Well, I'll tell you, I, I think that we should choose who, who's going to be on this committee.
So can I ask one clarifying question first? So like, is, is that, if you have a subcommittee, is, are they all the way through selecting the people or not as a
So my, my way I have this lined out is they get it down to your top candidates. They bring their scores of all the candidates to that meeting in November that I brought up. Here's our recommendations to you as a board based on our review of these applications of the people that we should interview. The board makes the decision, okay, we're going to bring these X people. Or we're going to do virtual interviews. Or, you know what? We want to put it back out again. The recommendation will come to the board at that point.
So since there's no job description, I, I'm asking this super selfishly because I'm leaving in a few days. So I'm not going to be on the subcommittee, but I think there are a few things that I really would like to make sure to see that are in that job description for whatever we're posting, you know? So can I, if we select other people, can I just submit that?
Email it to me. Email it to me.
Okay.
So every board member has direct access to you?
Yes. Yeah. So that's, that's the easiest thing.
So I would just strongly suggest from a political standpoint that you still don't want more than two of the board members on the search committee. Because if you have three, then at some point they could be accused and make the decision before it got to the full board and all of that.
I agree.
Yeah. And, and I think we only have two members that are going to have time to do it. And I would frankly like to keep it in, within the board, not out, not outside the board. Unless, of course, we had you, since you've been a member for, since we've had you for a member for thirty-eight years or forty years.
Thirty-two.
Thirty-two. I thought you were, Don.
Really quick.
I was first elected when I was eight.
My thoughts on it is I was looking at a small committee that would have someone that's an expert in finance on the committee with us. Can ask those financial questions. Correct me if I'm wrong going this way. And then another person that I know lives in this community that has not been really involved in this park district at all, but he's an ex Park and Rec guy and has been in the business for a long time that understands park and recreation. You know, I'm kind of looking at those type of folks.
So Jim, one of
But I, I might be off pace.
Yeah, Jim, I think one of the options we could do with that is when we get down to the interview stage, we can have a citizen stakeholder type of committee that maybe with staff, have a combined committee that does a series of interviews or does the interviews through a pool. What I like to do when I do this and what I did at Willamale Lane, hiring anybody underneath me that was a direct report, is I had a public process with it. And part of that was that we would have a few of the staff involved along with some stakeholders. Let's say it's a recreation director. And we, we wanted to make sure we had good relationships with the City of Eugene. So we had the City of Eugene's Recreation Director on there. And by the way, we had the, the Little League President on there or whatever. So that we had those folks, they would interview and give you recommendations, but it's the final decision is yours. So in an interview process, they may have two interviews, a tour facilities, and a meet and greet with the public, all in one day. Or the night before, do the meet and greet or whatever, however it works out. But I've done it where once a person at this level gets to an interview, people, well, that's a lot. Well, what's your normal workday? Your normal workday is a lot. If you're out meeting people and you're dealing, making decisions, you're untasked. And so I think the ability to include some other folks in that
We could do that later date with the finalists, like you're saying.
Yeah.
I think that's great.
Okay.
That'd be great. I just want to make sure that those folks are there to ask the questions that we may not know or be able to ask.
Yeah. So, you know, that, that to me would get to that important piece that you're looking at.
Well, I'll tell you what, I'd like to simply just make a motion. And I'd like to make a motion that, that we've got Matt, we've got Jim on this committee. That's what I'd like to do.
I'll second it.
If you guys, if you guys are willing to do it.
You can be around. Yeah. I'll be gone for about six days, but I can still be available. And based on this, I think we can get, we get that first meeting before I go. So a motion's made and seconded to appoint Jim and I to the search committee. Is that what we call ourselves?
Yeah, Superintendent.
Superintendent Search Committee.
It's called the Superintendent Search Committee.
Okay, got it. Okay. Any more discussion on that point?
No.
Okay. All those in favor of the motion, so stated. Aye?
Aye.
Who's opposed? Okay, so that's the, the first thing. And then getting a, we're going to absolutely have to do, I know it says optional, but we're going to have to do the virtual meeting with you via the committee with respect to the, the job. The, what would it be called? The, the job description and the salary.
So are you talking about the, the first October meeting that doesn't have a date in it?
Yeah, so
But that's for staff, wasn't it?
Right. I, this would be, this meeting would be for me to meet with your staff.
Right.
And then
Do we need to be at that meeting?
No. No. In fact, I would just assume you're not be at that meeting.
Oh, yeah. Yeah, I'm referring to the, with the one that's specific to the search committee. So that's the third checkbox here.
But you could do that before the ninth, right? Could they do that before the ninth or is that too soon?
Would, the ninth. What's Maggie about tonight?
He's leaving.
I'm out of town for about six days. So I just want to make sure that we get that part.
Let's just work through the calendar after the, after we're done with the discussion, see when we can get things done. Because I'm also going to be gone. I had a previous vacation scheduled.
Can you move it? Can you cancel it?
I've been married for forty-six years and I'm not going to just, actually, hail him, keep that, break that record. So, so I think that if Matt and Jim, if you and I can just have a discussion about the schedule after the meeting, we can do that real quick about when we want to try to get these things done. The, the job announcement and, and, I mean, the job description, I can get some copies and we can throw them on a Word document. I have Shanta, our executive, or our director, get those out and we can work on that.
Or they could just chat GPT, get those out.
They could do.
Yeah, yeah. So one of the, one of the things that I'd want to have, what I would like to be able to do with you right now and because I know that Matt's leaving.
Jason, Jason.
Jason, I'm sorry.
That's all good.
There, there's so many. And your nameplates, I can't see them. Look at there. Is what, what characteristics are, what, what are you looking for in your next executive director or superintendent? What, what, if you were to, if somebody were to say, here, here's three Post-It notes. Write down your, you know, the key attributes of that position. What are you looking for?
Well, I think each of us will have to answer that. I'll start. Communication. And interpersonal relation skills, I think are going to be very high on that list. The ability to budget. That's, we, we've had our superintendent is our budget officer and that's going to continue to be the case, I believe. So, and I know not every candidate probably, that's not necessarily in the wheelhouse of every candidate. So I think that's something we definitely, at least in my opinion, So I think that's something we definitely, at least in my opinion, would wanna stress. And then the next part would be for me that that intangible aspect, um, kind of that uh. That uh personality trait that is um hard to put into words, but you kinda know it when you see it. Like, do you fit this district, this community? Um, I think when you open it up nationally, um, there's people who aren't maybe as familiar with Oregon. Say, oh, it's Portland, right? No, it's not Portland. Um, so do they understand, you know, what this kind of community means and what this this park district does? You know, that's kind of an intangible. I'll stop there.
Yeah, I I want somebody that's a visionary, somebody who's thinking long term. Uh somebody who's committed to this community. We definitely need somebody who can budget, that's a that's a given.
Let's, can can we go back to this budget thing?
Yeah.
Are we talking about somebody that puts a budget together or are we talking about finance and having financial sort of a plan in place? And being able to to look at how how?
How are we gonna get from here to there?
Okay.
How are we gonna, how are we gonna put it together in five to twenty years?
And hopefully someone who doesn't say is first off, they're like, oh, we need to hire a budget officer, you know what I mean?
Yeah.
Does that make sense?
Yeah.
Well, there's a difference between having a budget officer and having a finance person that's keeping track of the books while you're while you're doing everything else. What I needed to be able to do is have picture out of somebody that was keeping the books good so that I could look at them and really understand where it's gonna go. And if we're gonna do something, if we're gonna put a new community center in, what's the what's the business plan behind that? So that we have enough tax dollars support that facility, right?
Right.
That's sort of the type of thing that you're talking about. So sort of this, I hate using a fancy word, but the acumen for finance. And understanding how budgets work, how uh your your business plan might work to support whatever you're doing. Okay?
So I I would like somebody who's invested in this community. I mean, I I would prefer if I had my, if I got to choose it, I'd want it to be somebody who actually already lives there. Somebody who already knows Newburgh and Dundee, somebody who is already invested in our community. Is that a person here? I don't know, but if I had my choice and we had somebody like that, that's that's who I'd like to hire.
So Jason, is part of that also, you you're not really interested in seeing somebody that's always changing jobs every two years?
Hundred percent.
That's, cause one of the things when if if you're gonna do this recruitment, you're gonna go nationally. Uh you wanna get it out there, you're gonna get lots of people that are gonna be changing jobs. But there are certain people that change jobs every two years and you just watch their.
Yeah.
And we have to understand in today's world, it's changed from when Don and I first started. We get into a role and we'd be there, like my master's been here forever. You know, that was what was going on and today you get you get a lot of the folks that are in leadership roles are there four or five years. And it's not because uh they don't want, they they just see where advancement is, they have a different. What you're looking for is possibly somebody that has been in place for a while, has shown a commitment to the community. Maybe they're involved in different things that are outside of just the district or the department they're working in. I got it.
Yeah.
Okay?
So.
So I get you down.
I think I think.
You got it. You got visionary, long-term, committed, financial acumen and invested in our community, yeah?
So um I'm looking at someone that that has good staff relationships, H R skills. You know, that comes on, um, that's good with public engagement. And uh, you know, you talk about one of the big deals with this district and we thank Don for that, he was very frugal. Not always in a good way, but he was very frugal, so that's why the budgeting end of it can make or break this district. So I'm really looking for someone that understands budgets and knows how to delegate what he needs to, he or she needs to delegate. So those three things.
So I think we all are on the same page about having the ability to understand financials and budgeting and be able to use that information effectively to. Grow the district appropriately. I'd say has an ability to, and I think some of this is all similar, has ability to interact well with people of all different um backgrounds and and needs. So whether it's staff, whether it's community, whether it's the board members, um, whatever that is. So just somebody that is can easily talk to a variety of different groups. And that and with a special emphasis on that to being able to interact with staff in a really positive way. And then I think having a some kind of knowledge about parks and right districts just. I think it's it's a little bit different, it's a little different animal and yet it's still a business, so.
So what's going on in the districts that's driving? These tighter attributes, is there growth stuff that's going on, is there? When you look at the budget, are you have concerns about the budget? Is there good policies and procedures already in place? What what is, cause normally what I would wanna do is sit down with you and really have an organizational assessment. What's going, you know, where are you in a number of areas? Uh because if you're, if you, if you're in a spot where, yeah, we've got all that, that's well greased, that's that's going swell. But you know, we don't know where we're going because we don't have a strategic plan. We don't know because we don't have a comprehensive plan where we're going or we don't have a financial plan. Those are different things, so um what what's driving?
We we have a lot of projects, a lot of dreams that we wanna get done. And there's a finite amount of dollars in order to get those things done. And we need to make sure that that uh we're spending our money wisely. Because we have a finite amount of dollars that are going to be coming into this district and we have a lot of need, so.
I I would say we're kind of on that. Uh we're in a growth position right now as a district. We have a number of uh very large projects that we're working on. And in the horizon, we have probably two or three other large projects and there's gonna have to be decisions made. And that's why I think we are all talking about budget and finance and how it reacts to this overarching plan. This, you know, ten year plan, maybe twenty year plan, what what we're doing. And then also I think what I'm hearing is is kind of a modernization in some sense, right? So modernization and um uh just the the processes, right? The um whether it be human resources or uh the the way the staff operates, all that kinda stuff. I mean, there's uh we're maybe a growing pains point and this, these are the things it seems like we're, for the most part, we're all kinda saying the same. Thing when it comes to those those pieces, so.
And one of the things that I think I've observed over the last seven years is that um Don uh and the staff were incredibly adept. At um knowing how much money that they had, whether it's from S D Cs or in the general fund. And and matching that with outside money, grants and other resources and and there's a schedule, they're two months point. A lot of these processes are not written down and so following those, I think we lose a lot with Don gone. Um and how to how how effective that process has been. Because if you look at the amount of resources we have here versus how much money we've actually had to spend, it's impressive. And so I think it's really, um, I think that it's that it is that growing pain of saying, he did this in a very specific way. I don't wanna lose a lot of that because I feel like there's there is a lot of other resources out there that we can tap that will help us get there. But I think the demand for these services and the upkeep, we have to make sure that as we're adding stuff. We have a sufficient amount of money to pay for staff to keep it up, right? Because a lot of times everybody wants a nice fun shiny thing and then all of a sudden you still have the same amount of staff or you've only increased it significantly slightly and nothing gets done. So I think that that is part of how it's kind of rolled out and um there's there's a lot of desire now for a lot of different things. Uh that we don't currently have, um, and a lot more participation by the community in coming to our board meetings and expressing what those desires are. And so it's it's that balance, right?
So could part of this, just half a second, and I know Jason has to leave and you guys wanna, do you wanna, you wanna talk about that planner position with Jason a little bit?
I I I think we just stay on topic and make sure we're giving this the attention.
Okay, because the thing that I'm, what part of what I'm hearing is you're you're growing a lot. But what's the sustainability of maintaining those services at the quality that they're at today? It doesn't matter if it's maintaining the greens at the golf course or making sure that we have preventative maintenance going on at the swimming pool. Or we have developed a trail system and, you know, the signage is adequate from this point forward. All those things put put are a commitment uh with your dollars and how do you sustain that as you continue to grow? So that that's part of it.
We, very much so, yes.
You know, um, this isn't a negative thing, but it's a reality is that the district's heading for a financial cliff. In that we um have concentrated, we talked about S D Cs and all that time and as you know, we may have those funds, but that's for new. So if we we are, when I say financial cliff, we're gonna have to start replacing things that are forty, fifty years old. And in our budgeting, we really don't have the funds in today's dollars to be able to take care of some of those things. When the public is gonna demand that they be taken care of or replaced, that's coming. And so whoever this new superintendent is, is gonna have to be aware of that and plan accordingly and that that includes the staffing. I mean, we're in a situation where we're adding, adding, adding. And a lot of the adding, those things don't pay for themselves, we don't get revenue from those things. We look like they're going, you're putting in a new artificial turf field, which you know all about. And that's gonna take a certain amount of maintenance time and it may end up, we may have to hire more people to handle these new things that everybody wants. Where's that money coming from and is revenue justifying that or are we gonna have to look at something else? So to end my soapbox. I think that whoever this new person is looking, we're looking for is gonna have to look towards a levy. That is substantiated with need down the road to be able to afford these things. Otherwise, we're gonna have to pick and choose what we can't take care of and I hate to see this district that way. Now, this, I'm not saying tomorrow, I'm not even maybe saying in four or five years. But after that, things are gonna start breaking down. And people have got to understand, we gotta have a way to fund that, so that's something to think about.
Yeah, because one of the things is as you continue to grow, your reserves aren't necessarily keeping up with what that demand's gonna be. Cause if you did that, that service that that you really wanted to provide, you couldn't do. Or there's somebody else not doing that or it it all plays into that. You know, one of the best advices I would give to you when you decide or that person decides to do that is make sure that you have a really good. Uh survey work with your community, find out what they want and how much they're willing to pay for it.
Which we don't have.
Yeah, and that is important stuff, that's what made us successful at Willamalane and at Lane County that we just passed two years ago. They had never passed a parks levy and we went out and did the right survey work to find out how much would they be willing to pay? And how much and what was most important to them and then you put that on the levy, you know? If it's replacement, uh because we have so many kids playing soccer and it's replacement of or more artificial turf. Field so we can play or lighting those fields and by the way, we have to put money away so that we can replace that. You know, those are things that happen when you reach out to the community in that way. So that's that's an added bonus, that's down the road.
Thanks.
Yeah. It works.
Did you understand where I was coming?
Yeah, absolutely, I'm there. I was um in my in my career, I have faced that quite often, so. And then, so that helps there because that's sort of, that's that type of information, when I start looking at the job announcement, there's some key words there. You know, I could talk about somebody that has good experience in the working with financials and being able to forecast costs and work within those. Things like that, I could put in the job announcement and what are, it doesn't even have to be in the job description that way. But in that job, if somebody's looking for that, that's had some experience, I can, and some of these attributes that that you've talked about, we can get in there. And maybe that picks that interest to that one person that is the right fit for you guys because we use those types of words. When I talk to staff, I'm gonna have similar type of discussion with them and find what what's going on there as well. And those are the type of things we'll do. As far as the, what I was thinking about what the committee charged from this point forward would be working with me to finalize what's that price? The the process for the interview, what's the criteria and how we're going to score applications? So we can do that, we don't have to do that tonight if you're delegating that authority to that point to the committee. And the really, the committee's role at this point is to help us get applications and then and set that process up. And then get to you, if we will, to keep to this schedule, uh somewhere around October twenty fifth. Their recommendations for the people that we bring in for interviews.
Yeah, and we did luckily, it was just a week ago, we did go over some of the, or a couple weeks ago. We went over some of those scoring criteria, so I think we're all familiar with those.
Yeah.
And I think we all like the objective scoring criteria, the way it was. He even presented your, the way you do it versus the way he did it.
Yeah.
Um, and so I think. I think I'm speaking to the board where we like that.
Yeah.
Um, and so we're very comfortable.
But but again, if if you as a committee can make that decision, that's awesome.
Yeah.
Okay, uh and that way we don't have to come back here.
No problem.
All right. I think from my perspective, other than uh, you know, are we delegating? How about the beginning salary range? How do you wanna handle that?
You know, I I looked, um, I have to tell you that in in reality, our superintendent worked on the cheap.
No kidding.
I mean, really cheap and so, so I think that we need to be competitive out there with. You know, I looked at the West Coast from N R P A and what those salaries might be, I don't know if that's realistic in Oregon, Washington, I don't know. But we wanna be in the range where we can get a quality person, I mean, I'm not talking to Walden Hills at two hundred and thirty-five thousand. Whatever their general manager's getting, but I am saying with a twenty million dollar budget and the amount of property that we have here. And the amount of amenities that we have here, that we find someone quality because we're offering a quality benefit package. I can say, even though the salaries were not the best here as far as, you know, averages are right now, I think they brought them all up pretty well. But except for superintendent, but our benefit package is really, really good. And that, you know, is a big deal for a lot of people, so that's a sales point right there. But I think that we're gonna look at you, cause I looked at um River Road and I looked at some other park districts, stuff that you have folks have done. And it probably, we're a little bigger than River Road.
Yeah.
And we have a golf course, we have used complexes and cultural centers and everything else. So I'm not exactly sure where that would be. We do have a um a grade scale um that we can share with you and we would just have to figure out where, what's grade.
See, if he's under a contract, he doesn't have to be in that grade, it's a separate.
Okay, well, there you go.
So that those are things that are all negotiable, okay?
And then that person, whoever that person is hired would look at that scale and figure out if it needed to be adjusted, that's not what we're doing here. You're looking at it as a comparable, right? I don't think we should because I think that whole scale is ridiculously low, so.
That's a.
It depends where you start on each scale at each grade, but anyway.
Yeah.
I just, I I think you understand what I'm saying.
Yeah, so I could tell you that you you're probably gonna be looking at. I I you're gonna be in excess of a hundred thousand dollars starting.
Well, we're one twenty-one for the superintendent now.
Right now, so so you could be uh Don Horton in Bend, I just got two twenty-eight, I couldn't believe it, he's highest paid public employee in the chute scanning. Uh but whatever, whatever, I don't know what the superintendent's making at Willamalane, but it's probably more in line with that, uh maybe a little bit less.
More in line with two hundred and something?
No, it's less, the the guy at Willamalane, Michael Worgo, whatever he's getting, it would probably be. No, it's less. The, the guy at Willamalein, Michael Worgo, whatever he's getting, would probably be.
Is what comparable is what you're saying?
Comparable, probably a little bit less than that.
And considering how much time he's been doing it, so how it was coming in.
So I'm just, I'm just, I'm just thinking out loud, trying to think who else in the state, because you guys are in that, in that middle piece.
Yeah, we're not to Walton Hills, we're not Bend.
And you're not Bend. And so Willamalein and Chehalis are very close in size of, you know, Springfield, you know, serves about fifty, sixty thousand.
Yeah, we're thirty-four thousand plus, but we cover two cities also.
And you've got a different complexity with the golf course, you know, and all the other things that go here. It's different. But when you look at a twenty million dollar budget, and you look at the number of staff, and you look at some of those things, we can look at it and we can, we can do, we can also go to NRPA and see what communities of this size are, are paying elsewhere.
And they're going to negotiate a range.
Yeah, yeah, that's, that's, and we're only talking about the beginning range. Beginning range is between, let's say, just a hundred and ten to one forty. I don't know, just somewhere in there, let's say. And that's what we'll decide as a, as a group.
Yeah, I think the bigger range probably is why we're going to, we'll fault on the side of a larger range.
But again, but again, the benefit package, people will look at that too.
But one of the things that I found, Jim, in this is that, most people, when they come and apply for a job and they say, oh, we've got great benefits, well, they just, yeah, everybody has great benefits. So you have to be able to express how that's different. If your, if your retirement program or your health insurance is just, you know, Cadillac of Cadillacs, then you want to express it.
If we're asking for only ten percent, that's just something.
Yeah, yeah, all those things. So we'll, we need to discuss that about how we express that. You know, it's like, at one point, River Road, they advertised full-time and we worked thirty-two and a half hours a week. That was their big thing. You know, like, oh yeah, so our salary may be a little lower, but we're, you're only working thirty-two and a half hours a week. You know, it's sort of a different thing. So we, it is, it's one of those things that we can look at. So with, with all that, I can, I can get, I'll, I'll work with Kat to get a time to schedule a virtual meeting with staff. Once I have that, you're gone when, you know, Jason?
Um, I'm gone, I'm mad. I am gone. I think it's October ninth or something, so.
For six days?
About, I think it's six days, so let's just do before that. If we can get our first meeting in, yeah.
Okay, we'll talk after the meeting, see what we can do.
We'll hash it out.
Okay, good. Really, I think that that, if you're fine with this, we'll revise the schedule as we need. We'll pull this group together. We'll give it a twenty-four hour notice so that appropriate public notice can be given when we're going to meet. And we'll make, we can make virtually.
And I'm pretty, I'm pretty, well, like you, retirement is semi-flexible.
Yeah, yeah, except for when.
Except for when the wife calls you, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, so I can, we, we can work on those dates and I'll work with Kat to get a time schedule that fits my schedule and probably going to, yeah.
Okay. Well, anything else on that subject before we move on to the project planner discussion?
Well, really quick though, Kat, you said you're going to be out.
I am. I'm going to be out from October fifteenth through the twenty-fifth.
Okay, as long as, you know, that.
I, I, you know, the way it sounds with everybody's schedules, I'm, I'm looking at that we're probably posting this towards the end of the month. I know that's kind of stinks because it's adding another like week or two on it, but the reality is the reality. And we, I don't think we were expecting to do it this freaking first place, but.
I'm going to, let's just talk afterward, we'll figure it out.
We'll, we'll hash it.
And if we have to move it a couple of weeks, we'll move it a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Okay, project planner. Jim was able to put together a job description for this. I know it's obviously kind of short notice. I was able to review it. I liked it. Were you able to work through it too?
Yep.
I don't know if, you probably just saw this today.
I, I saw it earlier today. And I, I just want to counsel you on one thing, or maybe more than one, but. Timing on this and with hiring the superintendent, this person would normally be hired by the superintendent. And they have to understand.
We have an interim superintendent too, as far as Casey, but he's a pretty busy guy.
But this would leave some of that.
Well, he's the assistant superintendent.
He's the assistant superintendent. I didn't know that. I don't have the, it's something I need. I need an organizational chart. Can I get an organizational chart?
I don't need it one.
I don't know if that would help necessarily, so.
I, for, for me, for me, it does, just to understand the role here.
Yeah, we'll state your concerns and then we'll.
Okay, my concern is, is having the board hire this position, but it doesn't report to you. You have one employee. And so my concern is that if I was to become your new superintendent and this was something that we needed and the board wanted us to proceed, I'd want to be involved in that process because my skill set may be that I, I have some experience in project management, but I don't have any experience in planning as far as some of these detailed plans you may need to have done, or community outreach, whatever. I don't know what those are, but my skill set, I would like somebody that can complement what I've got and help build upon that. And not hire, not have somebody there that, oh, we're obvious, we both do the same thing, but we don't have somebody to really look at whatever attributes that we're missing.
I think that's super fair, and I also think that this staff is super short-staffed at high levels. And I, I don't know if they have, they need relief. Casey's working seven year old.
Yeah, so.
I mentioned, I'm, you know, I had a whole diatribe I was going to do on this, but one thing I did mention, that you mentioned, is that, you know, I volunteered to write up the job description and do all, all that work, but, and then turn it over to the staff, because the board is not responsible for this position, like you said. I understand that. So the staff would be doing the, going through the selection process and so on and so forth, not the board. Because this is another employee.
But we're, we're looking at it because it's a new position and adds to the budget. It's not filling an existing position.
Yeah, and it's a complicated situation, because we did vote as a board, was at the meeting before last, to, to add this position to our tree, and obviously, things have changed since then. The other situation is our assistant is spending, like, it's averaging around seventy-plus hours a week because he's in charge of the golf course, so he's on a, on a lawnmower, okay? Which means that our projects that we have a number of right now are very time-sensitive. We have grants, you know, with expiration dates, so on and so forth. So we need, staff needs relief in that. And then as the board, in order to fulfill the direction that we've given on these various projects, the work has to get done. And so we're understaffed by probably three positions, I'd say. Golf superintendent, superintendent, and then because our assistant, who normally would be sharing project planning duties, is being pulled away at the golf course, it's become a very urgent thing.
Yeah, I, I'm not trying to downplay that at all, Matt. I'm just saying, are you getting the cart for horse with superintendent hire? Is there a way to contract for those services? And I was, I know, for project planner managers, there are folks out there that do that. I was telling Jim, I'm aware of at least one guy locally, being local within fifty miles over in Clackamas County, that has lots of experience doing project management. So, you know, could, could that relieve some of that weight on, under a contract situation until you got your superintendent hired and then that position hired? Is that a possibility? And depending on what the scope of those projects are. Because again, you're probably a three-month period even hiring somebody, you know? You're going to get a qualified person. So we're in October, that's maybe the earliest that they could start. We, sometime in January, a little bit different process than this, doesn't have to have all the, the board buy-off and all that stuff.
One of the reasons we wanted to bring someone on board, and, and you've made up some, you've made some great points, is that we wanted someone that would be all in to the community. And not say, okay, I'm a, I'm a, you know, I'm a contractor with you, and I've got this other job over here, and I've got this other job over here, and I will get to you when I can, unless we lay it out in the contract, hey, you are concentrating only on this.
Yeah, well, that's my, my point would be, you would identify which projects they're doing in this short amount of time. Over this next eight months, here's the projects that you're in charge of and we have to get done. What's the negotiated price to do that? And then they're done. Meantime, you hire a superintendent who hires the project, park planner, and project manager.
If that's what he needs.
And he, and it may be that the board's saying, we got all this going and we're just going to do it. I would not, I guess quite frankly, I, if I was in his shoes and the board said, we need this and we want you to have that position because of all this, why would I say no? That would relieve me of some of my workload. So it would be. But the type of person that's fitting in that, sitting in that chair, what their skill sets are versus what mine are, are important at that point. So that's a, that's an option for you. As far as SEO assisting with this, we certainly can assist you. It would be an additional contract, not to exceed five thousand bucks. But again, that, that, and I got that from Shanta today. I, I didn't know how much it was. We don't normally, we're normally just new district managers.
I think this would probably be in-house. I don't know, it's just like other positions that we hire. You know, we hire within, I think the in-house has hired other supervisory positions from the aquatic center and other things. And just like the golf course, new superintendent, that'll be in-house. So it'll probably be in-house with the staff in-house.
So what you're saying is, we're just looking at this and approving this job description, and then the staff, like Casey as the assistant superintendent would go and post the position?
Yeah, I would help, I would continue to help, you know, to make sure. But, but again, I think you brought up some good, good, um, good questions, so anyways, it depends on how you want to look.
Yeah, we're, I think we're at a pickle, because the, the urgency we have is still there. And I, and I don't believe that a contract can necessarily do everything that we're expecting or that we have expected as a board in, in our projects. We have a major project at Jakewood Park, major project at Sanders Park, which has been, I think, frustratingly delayed. And then a major project at Rennie Park, which is going to be, I'd say it's going to probably be complicated. Yeah?
Looking over my shoulder.
And so the, and the, a couple of those projects, I think, are, are the type of thing where, you know, when we discuss this as a board, when we did vote, the, there was opposition from staff saying similar things to what you're saying. And we made the decision that, no, we need, we need this position in order to, to do what we said we need done.
You as a board could decide however you want to do it. I just, I'm just giving you my, my counsel, and I will support you in whatever direction you want to go. It's, it's important that you just take in perspective all of these other pieces that play into that. And if the urgency is about getting a project done, you can get a contractor right on board, a consulting contractor on board to do things right away versus going through maybe a month process versus a three-month process. And then, and so, but I don't know, you know, the details of those projects. So if you, again, nothing stops you from approving the job description and directing staff to begin the process of recruitment for that position. Same time, Casey may come up to you and say, you know what? That's not a half-bad idea. Why don't we hire X person to go manage the project at Jakewood? Because we need to get that done now because the grant is coming due, whatever. You know, you can still do that. And if you want to talk about taking load off people's, you know, workload, that's an immediate thing that you can do, so.
Well, I, I think I agree with that. I, I see no harm in us moving forward, approving this job description, giving it to staff, and then, and then if you want to follow up with staff on what that looks like, if they, if they believe, if Casey believes there's other options that are more urgently available.
Can we ask that? Like, I mean, I mean, is, would it be better to hire contractors right now to get this work done? Or for y'all, or would it be better to go ahead and wait until the new superintendent is in place to hire this position or something similar to it?
I think it's a really good question. I, would you?
I agree with, you just said both statements that he had said, that Bob has said. That I think you would, it would be who was to definitely contract it out and approve the job description. It's something you could get on board immediately and they could take over these projects. And that, that individual might even be a person that might be interested in the job too, you know, I don't know. But, and then let the new superintendent, with staff's input, of course, if he welcomes out or she welcomes out, help fill that position.
I feel confident that we can post the job description and that we would be able to interview people similar to what we did with the golf superintendent when we hired Scott at the golf course several years ago. I thought that was a great process. We were all involved in that. I thought that was good. You know, I don't know, we haven't had a contractor here, here for a very long time. So I'm not sure. I do think it is an advantage, it would be an advantage to have somebody that knows a little bit about our community.
I'm thinking like NV5, you know, I mean, a lot of these guys are doing a lot of the design work, but they are also planners, they're also project developers. I mean, they, I mean, they know their stuff, right? So, and they know this community.
I had talked to Will, who's the city manager in Newburgh, and he had said that he would be able to help us in terms of publicizing it and putting it through their system that they use, and that he would, they have quite a few planners and project managers on their staff, and that he would be able to give us some advice too on kind of what he looks for, but also maybe if he knew of somebody in the community that had some experience in that. So something to think about.
Kat?
Well, maybe you could do both. Do, uh, do triage on your most urgent two or three projects that could move along and adhere to grant guidelines within six months, put the contractor on that. And in the meantime, immediately begin recruiting for the permanent planner with an open-ended timeline for that, for all the projects.
If I may add, I think I might have mentioned this last board meeting. See if we were to, in a perfect world, contract it out and we had the three major projects, whatever right now that need attention, and get someone on board, those get the attention they deserve, those progress like they're going to. New superintendent comes on board, we hire the superintendent for the golf course, which is going to happen here, and develop the staff down there. Maybe we don't need that person, maybe that, maybe we're layering, like I had mentioned before, that we already have an assistant superintendent or someone up position on staff right now that would go back to the projects or whatever, but maybe I'm not seeing something. But that's just, I see that playing out, that it's going to work itself out at the golf course.
We were in that situation before, with the golf course superintendent.
I'd like to think it's going to work out at the golf course. It's, it's part of evolution and attrition and things happen. But we, we've grown leaps and bounds, but I just, I just think it would. And then we step back. And then we step back and maybe we don't need that position, or we already have somebody on staff that could do that position. We don't need that or another layer. You just made a good comment about, it's all coming due here down the road before you know it, in terms of maintaining services what we have and maintaining the properties that we have based on our tax base and our budgets, and we all know that. And that's, the price of this position alone, that's two FTEs right there. You know, in terms of beginning staff or full-time staff, approximately. So I kind of look at it that way too, but I don't know. I'm not doubting that it's an important position. We absolutely need to have someone on staff that, we're leaving money on the tables with grants and opportunities and all that. And I know we have a ton of stuff that needs replacing and repairing and projects come and do, but, uh, yeah, that's just.
Well, the other question is, okay, let's just take Sanders Park for example. We start working on that grant, we're still not gonna finish that part, it's gonna be continual. And that contractor's got all that work, he's done all that stuff, and then we turn it over to another person. And so.
Yeah, but I mean, I, I don't know about y'all, but I'm hearing from staff and from our consultant that giving the new super, to finding out what their strengths are first, letting it shake out to what's happening with the shortfall of people, and once we start getting them on, what does it look like? It may not look as, it may look like we have more space in that development space and, uh, but in the meantime, at least if we can contract out next week with somebody to keep that, to get those grants done so that we don't lose that money. I feel like our professionals are telling us what they think is like a good path for us long-term too. You know, because if it's gonna, if we're gonna hire somebody by the beginning of February, and you're gonna put out, especially during the holiday season, a job position like this, without the superintendent around, you have the assistant superintendent who's overworked right now. It's gonna take almost, like you say, till January before you have somebody on board. One month later, you'd have.
Well, when this was written also, the expectation was for the superintendent to be here through June.
Right.
And now, now things have changed.
Yeah, we're reacting to, I've seen change, that, you know, that's.
I, I don't have a problem going that way. Um, I just want to, I just know that the longer we wait for these things, and I said this a hundred times, inflation, the costs of all these things are going up, and it's costing us more. We would have started back in the day, we would have paid for this consulting three times over. But now we're in this situation, so. I mean, if the board's okay with this, if, Bob, if you want to send me some names, then I'll go look out for some names too, and then I'll give them to the staff and we can look at that. And the problem is, is I don't know that we have a form for a contractor on up in this district to hire someone like that, because there really haven't. Except for, except for some of our, I, I should take that back, except for some of our consultants of yours.
Right, and so you've got some of those folks, but also with, if you were to hire a landscape project engineer or somebody to do that, uh, under the state provisions, it's pretty easy. You don't have to go through much of a process to do that. And, I'm sorry, then they've got contracts that you would utilize. Uh, the person that I was thinking about, that I don't want to put on record right now, because I, like.
Yeah, we'll talk.
Is that, this is what he did in the public sector, and he's retired and he continues to do this, and it's, it'd be a personal services contract. And again, I do not know the extent and the details of your projects, but what I'm hearing from you is that.
They're extensive and detailed.
What?
Extensive and detailed.
Extensive and detailed.
Extensive and detailed. But my, my, my point would be, I keep hearing, gosh, we're shorthanded, we need to get these things done, we don't want to lose them.
Yeah.
And, um, so, could we at least expedite some of that to get some of that off? And then you can post this position when you want to post the position. You could post the position January first, knowing that if, if we have the, the superintendent coming on February first, that person would be involved in the process. I mean, there's all sorts of things.
So it's been a long time since I've got to share good sports in our league, the park board. But, I mean, you guys are the team owner. Even if an NBA team or an NFL team finds itself missing both its general manager and its coach, they always hire the general manager first. And the general manager hires the coach, because they have to have the relationship.
Well, then let's, I mean, if you guys, we got a forum here and want to move and look into contracts. Either way, we need to move on these projects.
So what, um, Kat says, we can approve this job description, um, and then we can also, uh, give staff the approval to look into, uh, contracts, um.
And I'll volunteer to work with them to get it moving.
And then, yeah, I think that it's kind of, uh, both options, knowing that most likely, the most urgent solution is likely to be a contract, if that's what staff finds, if that's what Casey finds, is the most helpful for him to move these projects forward. Um, and then that gives, that gives a little bit of wiggle room. This is still here, and I mean, two months is gonna go by really quick. We can still post this and, um.
I just want to take the word off Casey because I want to make sure that we have him to work here and not be buried out of the golf course because of the amount of time he's putting in.
Right.
What if, yeah, and I think by getting a contractor, you're gonna get them in quicker. What if we were to use the job description that we've approved to, to show this is what we're looking for, right?
Well, I think.
I guess you have a contractor.
You can have a contractor, you need, what are you, what project are you going to do? Identify what role that's in, and that's what staff would need to be able to do.
Yeah, I can have staff, but that's.
Yeah, 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 that doesn't work. I think, I, I would just support your, your idea of approving the job description, because then that, that's done, and when you're ready to post it, it's ready to go.
So do we want to give Jim?
We don't need to, we don't need to approve the job description as a board.
Yeah, I don't even think we need to.
Because that's staff.
On him.
Yeah, I think that's.
And then you just bring back, but if you guys want to bring back something before the October board meeting, I mean, we can do it by email, right? Just so we can move it along, otherwise, we're waiting until.
Well, staff.
You can't, you can't do it by email, you can't make decisions by email without.
You have to do it.
Right, but we're, but I think the consensus is that we're giving staff the.
The authority to go ahead and.
The authority.
Then I think we have to make a motion to give them that authority.
Um, do, so the motion, okay, let's see. Um, I'm trying to think how to word this. Um, I'll make a motion to allow staff, um, or to direct staff, not allow, to direct staff to, um, potentially. What's that?
For authorize?
Or authorize staff to, uh, move forward with, uh, a project planning contract specific to the outstanding, uh, projects that we have.
And to work with Jim on creating that list.
And Jim will be the liaison on the board to assist staff in, uh, the criteria associated with that contract. Is that good?
Thank you.
I'll second.
Okay, motion's made and seconded. I'm not gonna repeat the motion. So, the, uh, all those in favor of the motion, they.
Aye, aye, I'll just post, okay.
Did you get all that, Karen?
Yeah, let me read it back, and Lisa, were you the second?
No, Jim was.
Thank you. Okay, just let me get that down. And please let me know if there are any corrections to this. I have motion, motion to authorize staff to move forward with project planning contract outstanding to projects existing and appointing Jim McMaster as liaison to work with staff.
To develop the criteria, I think, for the contract. That's it. Yep.
Okay, got it.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, I think that is all we have unless I'm missing anything. Speak now or forever hold your peace. Is that it? Okay, we will.
Thank you.
Yeah, Bob, you want to stick around and talk to?